Good afternoon, everyone. This is Prescott City Council Voting Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 22. It's 3:00 P.M. So I will ask our current Mayor Pro Tem whether she has any introductions or announcements.
Well, I certainly do, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start off with Arizona's Christmas City kicks into high gear starting this weekend. Here are some highlights. The Holiday Light Parade and Bonfire is this Saturday, November 26, starting at 6:00 P.M. The parade goes around the Courthouse Plaza with dozens of beautifully lit floats. Immediately following, there will be a bonfire at the Mile High Middle School Athletic Field. Then on Saturday, December 3rd, will be the 40th Annual Prescott Christmas Parade, and the theme this year will be Super Hero Christmas, followed by the 68th Annual Courthouse Lighting. The parade begins at 1:00 P.M., and the courthouse lighting takes place at 6:00 P.M. Also, if you can't make it out to these events, don't worry. You can watch them live streaming on Public Access Channel 64 or on the City of Prescott Facebook page. And then on Friday, December 9th, we have the Akronite Musical Showcase. The opening ceremony starts at 5:00 P.M. on Gurley Street with free live music from 5:30 to 8:30 P.M. at all the businesses around the downtown area. And new for this year, the Prescott Chamber presents the Prescott Christmas Village and Kris Kendall Market, December 16th through the 18th on Goodwin Street. Enjoy activities for the kids, horse-drawn wagon rides, authentic German food, beer, and mulled wine, plus vendors featuring local, handcrafted gifts. And ring in 2023 at New Year's Eve Boot Drop on Whiskey Road, December 31st. There will be fun for the whole family with live music, a Ferris wheel, and lots of fun. The boot drops at 10:00 P.M. and again at midnight. For information about these events and many more, go to the official website, arizonachristmacy.com. And on behalf of my colleagues on City Council and the entire city of Prescott, Happy Thanksgiving to all. And finally, this is the end of my year serving as Mayor Pro Tem. Shortly, we will be choosing the next Mayor Pro Tem to serve. Thank you. It was an honor, and best wishes to my successor. And that's all we have.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to invocation by Pastor Dan Hurlbert from the Prescott United Methodist Church, and then followed by Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Montoya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, just a moment, a personal privilege to inform you in the council of the passing of Ed Perry, a member of the Prescott United Methodist Church. Ed was a fixture in your meetings, and you honored him and his service to our country last Veterans Day. Ed died surrounded by his family on Thursday, and he continued to watch the council meetings and told me he actually preferred to watch at home because he could fast-forward through the boring parts.[217.26][217.26](Laughter). When he, when I laughed, he said, "Dan, I'm doing the same thing with church service." So we give thanks for Ed and the meaning that you all had in his life and the meaning that he had in ours. So let us pray. Great and wonderful God, during this week of giving thanks, we come before you to do just that. We give thanks for the wonderful place where we live, for you have outdone yourself with the natural beauty here. We thank you for those who love and serve this city, for those serving before us today, and those who serve behind the scenes, who take care of so much. Today, we are thankful for those who operate small businesses in our community, for the jobs that they provide, and for the backbone of our economy that they provide. We pray for those who will come to Prescott this season to celebrate here in Arizona's Christmas City. We pray for the safety of all. We give thanks for our servicemen and women, especially those away from home during Thanksgiving. Protect them with your care, even as we pray for peace on earth and goodwill to all. Thank you, God, for all that we have and all that we are is a gift from you. Above all else, we thank you for Christ our Lord, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Dan.
Please join me in the pledge to our great country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we'll have roll call, please.
Mayor Good?
President.
Mayor Pro Tem Rusing?
Here.
Councilwoman Cantalmy?
Here.
Councilman Montoya?
Here.
Councilman Moore?
Here.
Councilman Sishka?
Here.
And Councilwoman Tenney?
Yes.
All are present.
Very good. And we now have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday, November 26. Councilman Moore, would you do the honors for us?
Thank you, Mayor. That's a pretty big bag you got there, Sherry. Why don't you and Crystal and Stephanie come on up? It's as big as you are.
Shop small with a big bag.
All right.
Should go into market.
Are there any small business owners in the community that would like to come up as well?
We're doing Steve.
Well, heck, I'll come up.
Absolutely.
I always enjoy standing next to Jay.
Jay. All right. Mr. Olson. Well, thank you for joining us today as we recognize Small Business Saturday this week. Whereas the government of Prescott, Arizona celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy, and whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the United States, and they represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for 62% of net new jobs created since 1995, and small businesses employ 46.8% of the employees in the private sector of the United States. And whereas, 79% of consumers, there's lots of percentages in this, 79% of consumers understand the importance of supporting the small businesses in their community on Small Business Saturday, and 70% report the day makes them want to encourage others to shop small, independently-owned retailers, and 66% report that the day makes them want to shop small all year long. And whereas, 58% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business, and 54% reported they dined or ordered takeout from a small restaurant, bar, or café on Small Business Saturday in 2021. And whereas, Prescott supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving a Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, Phil Good, Mayor of the City of Prescott, Arizona, does hereby proclaim November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday, and urges the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. So we'd like to recognize the chamber, and I see you, I brought mine up too. We'll hear from Sherry Heine, our Chamber of Commerce President.
Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor, and council members and community. Small businesses is Prescott, right? And I want to remind everyone that on November 26 and for the next seven weeks, we will have an economic impact of over $52 million, $3 million in taxes, $35 million in visitor spending, and we'll be creating over 500 jobs in the next seven weeks as we enter into Small Business Saturday and the kickoff of Arizona's Christmas City. So that is very exciting, and it's thanks to all of you for supporting our business community, because that's truly what creates commerce. What Eric wanted to, or Councilman Eric wanted to share with us is that the chamber has put together a shop-local coupon book, and this is available now at the chamber office and online at Prescott.org, and you can go ahead and get some deals already from our small businesses that are participating. And I believe there's a few up here that are participating. So we're really getting excited about that. From 2:00 to 5:00 on Saturday, we will have a live remote promoting folks to come on down and spend their money downtown and get ready for the Holiday Light Parade. So thank you again for all your support. Thank all of you in the city of Prescott for the support. And I have to do a shout-out to our police and fire. I know that we're keeping you real busy with all our special events. We're sorry, but it brings in 52 mil, so.
Thank you, Sherry. Thank you, Stephanie and Crystal. Ladies, come back. They want a picture.
Want a picture?
To say a Kodak moment doesn't apply anymore.
No, it doesn't.
I have kids that don't, don't know what you're talking about.
All right. Thank you, Sherry. I'm gonna give this to you. Proclamation, thank you.
Well, thank you, Sherry, and thank you, Councilman Moore, and Councilman Knowles, I mean, Sishka. We'll move on to the open call of the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The City of Prescott welcomes public engagement. Residents may comment and address council regarding matters that are not included on the posted agenda during the open call to the public. If you wish to speak, please complete a green speaker card and submit it to me prior to the meeting being convened. As a reminder, speakers are limited to four minutes, and the call to the public will be limited to 40 minutes in total. I do have one speaker card today, Leah Colleen.
Good afternoon. My name is Leah Colleen. I'm a junior at Prescott High School and a representative for Teen Advisory Council at the Launchpad. Currently, Teen Advisory Council is working to spread awareness about our Better Together campaign, which is an effort to promote civil discourse among community members. Right now, the Better Together survey is out, which is an anonymous survey to be taken by residents of Yavapai County, and it pertains to any civil issues that they may observe within the community. With the results of this survey, Teen Advisory Council hopes to create a guidebook which lays a framework for productive civil discussion. The survey does close in November, and so if City Council would be able to post a link, perhaps, in their social media, that would greatly help us to reach a wider target audience. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's all, Mayor.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone want to pull an item from the consent agenda list? Hearing no comment, then I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 8A through 8G.
Second. Have a motion in second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Very good. Next item is liquor licenses.
Public hearing in consideration for an acquisition of Control Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License Application from Amy S. Nations, applicant for Lucy D's, location 669 East Sheldon Street. The application fees have been paid. The signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received, and I don't believe Amy is here.
Is the applicant present or the business owner? No, I know Lucy D's has been operating for, geez, I think, well over a year now, so maybe adding some additional beverage choices might be beneficial for them, so I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion in second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve the recommendation for liquor license number 212105 for an acquisition of Control Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License Application for Lucy D's, location 669 East Sheldon Street.
Second. Have a motion in second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
All right, we'll move on to item B.
Public hearing in consideration for a location transfer Series 6 Bar Liquor License Application from Amy S. Nations, applicant for Inspire Sports, location 3400 Gateway Boulevard. The application fees have been paid, and the signs have been posted for the required 20 days. Staff has reviewed the application and determined that it is in compliance, and no public comments have been received.
I think the business owner is in attendance, so I know that Amy Nation is not. Jim or Bob, you want to come forward and just give us a description of what your expanded services are going to be?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Let me take this opportunity to thank you guys for all the things that you do, since it is Thanksgiving this week. You know, Inspire Sports is, our vision has always been, it eats, stay, play, so we're working on that eat part, where we can have a restaurant and a bar. We think people are going to come to Inspire, they're going to play all day, and then we're going to sit around in a restaurant and eat and socialize and enjoy each other. Eventually, we'll be coming to you to hopefully get that stay part, so that's, that's always been our vision, so we're working on that, that part of the puzzle. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, thank you, Jim. I'm excited as your very unique operation continues to expand, and I know you've got a lot of, a lot of local interest there, and being able to have competitive tournaments and things like that will certainly support having some people replay their previous games and talk about their next games, and I think having the liquor license to support that probably will be a big help. So thank you very much. Thank you for your investment in the city, and we wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Any questions?
Yeah, Jim, question, you've got the bar part, when do you have the eat part?
So it's, it's going to come along right alongside the bar.
Okay.
So that's actually a work in progress, and so we kind of have a chef that's going to take it on, and so can't divulge any of that information yet, but we're, the restaurant's right there with it, so.
Yeah, Courtney.
Did I also hear that you were opening an ice skating rink? Is that right?
No, you're probably thinking about the place out in, at the fairgrounds.
Oh, okay. I just heard from somebody that was up behind Inspire Sports, so.
I have not heard.
Okay. Thank you.
That's probably the unofficial ice skating rink. Well, thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Good luck. Same to you, Bob.
Thank you.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion in second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Mayor, I move to approve recommendation for liquor license number 213493 for location change Series 6 Bar Liquor License Application for Inspire Sports, location 3400 Gateway Boulevard.
Second. Have a motion in second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Congratulations, and again, good luck up there. All right, we'll move on to our regular agenda.
First item is appointment of Mayor Pro Tem. As council is aware, annually, you are required to select a Mayor Pro Tem at the second meeting in November. Council can discuss and receive recommendations and then make a motion at their discretion.
Well, I'll lead this off by first thanking Councilmember Rusing for her
You're welcome.
...year of being Mayor Pro Tem. Your service as a Mayor Pro Tem is certainly appreciated over the past year, and I can't say that I have anyone in my recollection, recollection do a more thorough job of announcements. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to consider the new appointment, so I want to bring up the duties again. Mayor Pro Tem will be responsible for performing the duties of the mayor in his absence or disability, and the duties of the mayor not only include presiding over council deliberations, but also to act as the chief executive of the city government for all purposes and recognized by the governor for purposes of military law and civil defense, should that ever be required. So those are important considerations being available to potentially step in, and my absence or disability is important, and being able to have a good understanding and a foundation of all the many responsibilities and issues facing the city is critical to performing for that position. So I'll certainly entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Councilman Brandon Montoya.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Councilman Montoya, are you willing to accept the appointment?
Well, I, I would humbly say yes, although I didn't know about that civil defense part, so. But I, but I think I can rise to the occasion should it be necessary, and I appreciate the nomination, Kathy, and the second clerk, and I'd certainly be happy to serve if you have me.
Well, thank you very much. Have a motion in second, please vote.
Passes 7-0.
And I do want to comment, I'm very pleased to have you step in as our new Mayor Pro Tem, and I do want to comment that you've done a remarkable job of being informed and educating yourself on the many significant issues that the council has to consider, and within, you know, your first year on council, your willingness to do that is well noted and very much appreciated, so I'm looking forward to having you be my Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve, and I, I just will say that I'm grateful for the opportunity as I am to serve on council, and I very much look at it as an extension of my role on council to serve my community and help guide it in a thoughtful and good direction, so thank you.
Well, I know we share a lot of similar positions on fiscal responsibility and limited government, so I know I can rely on you to support those issues that I, I also incorporate. So thank you very much, and looking forward to you, and I, I think we're going to be changing seats here maybe next meeting.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Let's, let's move on to item B.
Adoption of Resolution Number 2022-1842 regarding an updated council policy for membership on city boards, commissions, and committees. And Mayor and Council, you'll recall that we have discussed this item at the last two meetings, once at a study session and at a previous voting meeting as well. Don't have a lot of additional information for you at this time, given those two previous discussions, but the item before you today is proposed adoption of the resolution, which was crafted and finalized based on council's discussion at the November 8th study session, and the incorporation of a code of conduct for all of our BCC members.
Does anybody have any comments or concerns? I know I originally kind of wanted this item to be deliberated and adopted, just because we have 27 now, soon to be 28, boards, commissions, and committees, and we've had so many graduates of our Citizens Academy who have found it so compelling to understand the responsibilities in the city and have voiced their concerns in wanting to be involved in additional opportunities to serve. So I think it's important that we make sure the people who are on these committees take their responsibilities seriously, attend the meetings, are involved in the meetings, do their homework, and for those who choose not to take it seriously, then I think it's important that we have the opportunity to allow further members to be able to find a place to serve the city. So I think with this policy adopted and with this code of conduct or adopted to support it, I think we'll end up with better performance and better recommendations coming those committees for this, the council to consider and, and rely on. Well, if no one has any other further comments or concerns, I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution Number 2022-1842.
Second. Have a motion in a second?
Sorry.
Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
We have another motion on this one, or is that completed?
That was it.
Okay, that includes both the Lucy and the new
Code of Conduct?
It does, Mayor. The Code of Conduct is an exhibit to the resolution, so adoption of the resolution includes that.
Very good, then we'll move on to item 10C.
Adoption of Ordinance Number 2022-1809, in ordinance of the Mayor and Council of the City of Prescott, Yavapai County, Arizona, amending Title VII, Chapter 5, Section 20, 7-5-20, Civil Enforcement by deleting the existing Section 7-5-20 in its entirety and replacing it with a new Section 7-5-20 and adding severance and penalty provisions.
City Attorney, can you give us some background information, please?
Yeah, thank you. So in terms of code violations, they can be prosecuted as a civil action in the court. It can be prosecuted as a criminal offense, also in court, or through a hearing officer process. The city previously had a hearing officer process, and I don't know, five to eight years ago, it was dismantled, and all code violations currently are going through my office and then prosecuted through the courthouse. Just felt like it was a, it's a slow process. All of the rights that are associated with criminal defendants are entitled, and it just slows the process down. It's not necessarily the most important thing to the court, and certainly for my prosecutor who deals with 2,000-something cases a year, it's a burden as well. So just to increase the efficiency, and based on the input that we had heard throughout the city, we just, we redrafted the hearing officer ordinance, can be used in all code violations, and it's based primarily on the previous ordinance with some updating. That's what's before you today.
Well, I know this came to my attention when we had a property over there off of Granite Creek that had been, in essence, abandoned, fell into extreme disrepair, and started to be occupied by transients, and eventually it ended up with a fire that burned down that building, and we were very fortunate to have a very rapid response by our police department that was able to knock down that fire, and we didn't have any weather conditions that would cause it to spread. So I thought it was very important that we are able to take some action when we have a situation where clearly the public's in danger, and be able to move forward with some of the necessary enforcement of codes like this, and also being able to allow property owners a due process where they can have their issues heard in front of a hearing officer so their concerns are considered before further action is taken, but I think it'll be a much more rapid process and helps secure public safety in the city. Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. I have a question for legal. Will there be any, our ability, will we be able to levy fines if it's not taken care of?
Yeah, so the ordinance does consider fines of $100 a day for each day that a violation is ongoing, after notification, after going through this process. It still allows for criminal prosecution to, to go through, especially after a violation of the hearing officer decision, but it just puts the focus on rehabilitation and fixing the problem rather than kind of the purpose of criminal, as we talk about all the other aspects of criminal sentencing, but the real purpose is punitive in nature, whereas this shifts that focus from punishment to rehabilitating property.
shifts that focus from punishment to rehabilitating properties and fixing the code violations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think we've had other examples of where property owners who really don't pay much attention to their property allow it to deteriorate into a dangerous situation, but once they start receiving escalating penalty bills, all of a sudden they decide that maybe I should take care of this. So that's what our hope is, and not to do it purely as a punitive move. So that way we'll have some of these concerns corrected and improved and not end up being a danger to the public. Councilmember Rusing.
Well, I'd just like to add that this is obviously a public health, safety, and welfare issue, and we need to take care of it before it is allowed to deteriorate and prevent urban blight.
Well, I think that's one of the primary issues of government, is to be able to make sure that the community is safe, provide safety, whether it's through public safety services, or in this case, making sure that properties are maintained in a safe condition. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move to adopt ordinance number 2022-1809.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Well, I think that concludes our agenda today.
No, Mayor, we have one more item.
Sorry, Tammy, no disrespect intended.
Is approval of RVP
Oh, that's the lot split, okay.
22-007, a revision of plat to split Lot 364R into two parcels and create an ingress, egress, and utility easement to and through Lot 354R to the new parcel. Location APNs 111-07-079, 111-07-080, and 111-07-081. Site zoning SF9, single family.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Tammy Dewett, community planner with the city of Prescott. So basically, this is within a subdivision that was originally plotted in 1909. Through the years, there's been many splits and combines and configurations, so here we have another one. So this was recently approved to create the three lots with this ingress/egress here. So what happened was they forgot to add this part, to add access over to these lots. So this map is going to add this easement for ingress/egress and utilities to this lot, and then this big lot here is being split into two more parcels. So this revision of plat is required to be approved by city council due to they are adding another easement, and they are splitting this parcel. So that concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions.
Well, I understand the Idyll Wall track was laid out before Arizona became a state.
I wouldn't doubt it. It's a mess out there, so through the years, it's been changed a lot, and so.
Yeah, I'm sure back then they didn't have a lot of foresight into realizing what type of access they might need, but here we are today.
Another question.
Councilmember Rusing.
Oh, I just have a question. Now, this couldn't have been done administratively, and why not?
When they're adding additional, the splitting of this parcel, if they were just adding this easement, we could have done that administratively, but because they were splitting this parcel, it's a revision of plat which requires city council approval.
Okay, just checking.
Very good. Any other comments or concerns? Then I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve RVP 22-007.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Tenney.
Saw us bogging down there for a minute.
Please vote.
Passes 7-0.
Thank you, Tammy.
It's a Thanksgiving miracle, right there. Thanksgiving.
I'll close this voting session with a couple of quotes. The first one's from President John F. Kennedy. "As we express our gratitude and thanks, we must never forget that the highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them." And this other one I found, I thought, particularly interesting. This is from Dr. Wali Ayini, who's a Canadian physician who was born in Nigeria. He said, "Be thankful for what you have. Your life is someone else's fairy tale." This meeting is adjourned.